Begin the meeting, Mr. Chair.
Yes, I would like to ask Mr. Cohen to amend the agenda.
Thank you. Amend the agenda for two, to review the mold remediation project at Mount Anthony Union High School and take action on awarding a bid. And also to, to vote, to set meeting date and time and republish it. And that date would, date and time would last until your next reorganization in March.
Okay, do I have a, do I have a motion? Will somebody make that motion?
So moved.
Do we have a second to it?
Second.
Very good. Is there any discussion on that? If not, I just want to be sure I understand this during the, during the, the finance part of the agenda, we will ask for the motion to approve the work to be done, the mold work to be done. And I think we will wait until the chair's report to amend and to establish the dates for the next meetings. Is that acceptable to everybody?
Yeah.
If so, all those in favor.
Actually, Tim, I'm going to talk about the mold during the superintendent's report, but then you can take the vote in finance. That's.
I think we'll do that.
And I have a question, Tim.
Yes, yes.
Why is this called a special meeting instead of a regular meeting?
Deana Atwood, our attorney advises that if we move from the time that you published when you reorganized in March, then it, even though it's on the day that you published, we've changed the time to label it as a special meeting, and that's on the advice of our attorney.
Thank you.
These dates are published in, through the SVSU website at any time. So we have a motion on the floor to amend the agenda, and we have a second. We've had a discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, abstentions, the motion's passed. We will move on then to Deana Atwood's presentation. As you remember, we asked her to inform the board about our options available in terms of Ed Letourneau's removal from the board. Deana.
Thank you, Tim. As we had discussed, I think at length at the last meeting that I was at with all of you, your options are incredibly limited. You know, members of the public had asked about, can you remove under Robert's rules? Can you appeal to the State Board of Ed? And I had indicated that that's not, neither of those are, are options which would work for you, nor are they options that would authorize removal of a board member. I also talked about the fact that Mount Anthony Union High School District is, exists as a charter, through, I'm sorry, the creation of a charter, and that you could in fact, either through board action, or you may in fact get a petition from the residents about making charter changes. And so what I have is, it's eight slides about basic, of what the charter change procedures are, so that people have that information. It was not, and I apologize, it was not in your packet because as an attorney, you know, I wait until the last possible minute to create something. That's part of what happens when you get a JD. So it is something, however, that Superintendent Colkeen has, and which can be sent out to the board members and can be put up on the website about it. It is taken from the statute, but I did want to run through with you all, with your permission and your indulgence, the charter change provisions that you can utilize. And I need to share my screen.
Made you a co-host, so you should be able to do that.
Thank you. And then I got to figure out how to get through the power. Can every, can you see it?
I see.
So as I said, you, you can have a charter change which is brought in before the voters of the, of the Union School District. Sorry, I'm going to just admit the person who was waiting. One of two ways. One is that it can be made either by the, through motion by the school board of directors, that the school, that the board of directors determines that there's grounds for proposing a change to your charter. The other way is through a petition of 5% of the voters of the school district. As a reminder, although you all know as well as I do, that Bennington, North Bennington, Shaftesbury, Woodford, and Pownell are all member towns for your Union School District. So that can be brought forward, I'm sorry, somebody should just stop me on how to do this, by the public. I don't, how do we do this? There, there are two different ways that the statute deals with whether it's a board proposal. It, it is a more involved process in terms of doing procedurally a charter change than it is to just generally speaking, put a petition on your annual meeting. And there, this is very much so listing out, but the highlights of this, of where the, one of the major differences are, is that there need to be two public hearings which are held prior to the vote on the charter proposal. I'm getting feedback, so I apologize. Those two public hearings also have dates which have to be done to make them fit within the statutory framework. They also have to have minutes. Those are, those public hearings are similar to how you do your informational meeting for your annual meeting. There are minutes that are taken. It is considered a meeting of the board. The board, after those public hearings, can in fact, based on the suggestions and recommendations that you hear from the public, you then can go back within a limited timeframe to revise your proposal, your charter change proposal, based upon the public input. I note here that you should be keeping that in mind if you're going, if you're going to go down this process for setting the dates for your public hearings. If it is a petition of the public, which is, as I said, five percent, it's a petition which is signed by 5% of the eligible voters, and it gets certified by the school clerk, there are different, slightly different limitations. One is, is that you do still have those two public hearing dates, but there is a, it is specified when the second public hearing date should not be more than 10 days after the first public hearing date. The board can only make technical corrections. You cannot revise a charter proposal by, by petition. Once the, you've done your public meetings and you've fulfilled a lot of the technical requirements, if you go down this road, obviously, I would be having a conversation with you about how to fulfill those. The proposed charter change, the one that comes through petition and/or from the board, shall be submitted to the voters at the next annual meeting, primary or general election. I'm noting here that your town meeting date, that town, town meeting day is March 2nd There are requirements for how the language is presented, whether it be by petition or it be by the board, in terms of having, as we use in contract negotiations, where you strike out language that you're seeking to remove, and you underline the language that you're seeking to add. There are ways of dealing with, as you can imagine, petition, petitions that are too long and about setting them out in a modified form. Voting on any charter change for, for your uni, your Union School District would be by Australian ballot. So that is something also to keep in mind. So there are ballots that have to be prepared as well. After the vote, within 10 days, your clerk of the school board certifies the vote to the Secretary of State. I've listed a whole bunch of things that need to be provided to the Secretary of State's The Secretary of State confirms that all of the documents are certified. They provide the copies to the Attorney General, the clerk of the House, the Secretary of the Senate, and the chairs of their two committees, one in the House and one in the Senate, concerned with municipal charters of both houses. The charter change proposal becomes effective upon the affirmative enactment of the proposal. One of the things I do want to point out to you is that the General Assembly is not obligated to keep the same language which you put in there. They can either adopt, they can either enact it with your language, or they can actually make amendments to the proposal. So that is generally speaking, how the process goes. There is a lot of, as I said, technical things about dates and about what are the documents look like, how do they get certified and the like. But, you know, you have two options. It can be by act of the board, and your citizens can also bring a petition for a charter change.
Thank you, Deana. A couple of questions. Would a charter change be retroactive in any way?
No, it becomes effective upon the, upon the enactment of the date. So, so I want to be clear, though, in, in the situation, in the general public situation that you're talking about, Tim, about people not being satisfied with the representation of a specific board member, your charter change isn't going to be, remove the board member. I want to be very clear about it. It would be more along the lines of, I think certain things were proposed about attendance, certain things were proposed about standards, in terms of not engaging in behavior which would be detrimental to the business of the board, something along those lines. But it would not be retroactive, and it would not be, it, it would not be a valid charter change to say, to modify the charter to say, we want to remove one member, identify the member. I want to be very clear about that. Does that answer, Tim?
Yes. Yeah, it does. I understand, yes. And if it did, would it make sense to have you or someone else review our charter to see if there are other changes that need to be made to it? Or is it best just to stick with, with one issue and not review the, the full charter?
We, we can review it if you want to. I'll give you a very quick, my understanding of the history, and, and some of you, including you, Tim, and some of your other board members may know better. And please don't take offense now that I'm going to tell you, your charter was in like 1968, 1969. I'm not saying you knew that. But that, that's, when the charter was done, and at various times, Woodford was added, North Ben, various time member districts were added. The last attempt at a charter change was 1996, 1998, and it dealt with the issue of sixth graders, sixth graders within, where they were going to be, I guess going to school is the easiest way I can say that. It did not pass. So you, you have a very old charter. If there are things that, that are not working, we absolutely can have a conversation about that.
Very good. Are there any questions for Deana from board members concerning what she's just presented to us?
I have a question, Tim.
Go ahead. Yeah.
Deana, just regarding public hearings, they can be held electronically, the way we're having this meeting?
Um, yeah, it's a meeting of the board. David, so yes, I, I would say to you that within the new COVID, you're going to be holding them electronically, I think for some period of time. So yes, they can be done. Minutes need to be taken. I don't know your Zoom, I don't know Zoom, but as well as I think I should, it probably can handle as many people as you need it to handle.
Any other, any other questions for Deana?
Uh, yeah, this is Amy. I have a question. Deana, you said, I think I heard you say that the path of going through a board proposal was more difficult or something. Can you review those two options just real quick again, kind of the Cliff Notes version about your opinion on, on those?
Well, well, I don't think it's more difficult. I think that there are just sort of some little technical differences regarding, for a petition, for example, the statute is very specific of when the second public hearing needs to be done. To be honest with you, sometimes a public petitions, the wording is not that great.
Okay.
In, in terms of that, but the board is, the board is limited to making technical corrections. They wouldn't be changing it based upon public input if it was a petition. But in the process, if it's brought forward from a board as a proposal, the board can make revisions through, after the public, after the hearings are done, as long as there's enough time that, that in terms of warning it on the deadlines for warning it, because you then have to rewarn out the, if you make changes or revisions, you have to rewarn those out so that the public has notice of what the revisions, the board's original proposal were. Is one easier than the other? I, they both have the same process of, of having the obligations of a public, of having the two public hearings. They both have the same obligation of having to get an affirmative vote. And, and if they get an affirmative vote, they both have the same process of going up to the legislature.
Thank you.
One more question. Do, do other school districts in Vermont have language similar to what we're considering? Have you seen that?
Um, there are select boards that I'm aware of within their charters that have it, no for, for school districts.
And does the state legislature have an opportunity to not enact the change? I'm not sure. Is there a vote that happens at the legislature?
There is a vote that happens on, at, at the legislature. The issue for the legislature is going to also be whether or not they want to amend what the language is.
Okay.
But yes, it does go to them.
Amy, are you, any other questions?
No, I'm set. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Excuse me, are there any other board members who would like to ask Deana a question?
Question?
Yes.
Will this process, or back up, when is Ed Letourneau's term over? And would this process happen before that or after that?
So the first answer is, I believe Mr. Letourneau is in the first year of a three-year term. Mr. Colkeen could probably correct me if I'm incorrect.
I think he's in the second, second.
2022.
He's up 2022.
Right.
So that's, that's one. If you don't mind, Dave, I, I, I will also back up a little bit. I, I want to be very clear that a charter change isn't remove Ed Letourneau. It's a process of establishing if the board thinks that there needs to be a provision in there, or the public believes there needs to be a provision in there, that establishes a procedure for removal of a board member based upon certain circumstances, right? So whether it's an, it's a failure to come to hearing, not hearings, excuse me, meetings, whether it is a, is a failure or an affirmative act which is contrary to the interests of the board, whatever, whatever we're talking about. So it would not be something which would put a finger and point to a specific individual board member. Is it possible from a timeframe, if you get a public petition that has the correct amount of, of, of individuals who sign it, that it would be something which would occur as a vote within your town for town meeting day? Perhaps. They need, there would need to be that 5% of your voters. For the board, there is also that timeframe. So we're in November, arguably, yes, you have the timeframe if the board was going to propose a charter change. We have the timeframe for getting it as part of your vote to the town meeting day in 2021. The Vermont Legislature, how quickly they would take it up, whether they would take it up in, in that session, my, I, I would hazard a guess that they will try and take it up in that session. So would it be in place for next summer? More than likely, if, if it goes through the process. But.
Thank you. Are there any other questions?
Uh, Tim, I'll just comment on that.
Yeah.
And Deana, you can correct me if I have this wrong, but I think that charter changes go through the Government Operations Committee typically. And although our committee assignments for the next session haven't been set, I think Nelson Brownell has served on that committee. So that could, for any charter change that the district might propose, that would be an advantage. And I know Nelson's not here to comment, so I'm just throwing that out.
Thank you. Any, any other comments? I think without, I, I want to give this some careful thought. I think that there are, there certainly is a great deal of interest in revising our charter to be able to deal with a situation similar to that that appeared last, last year. I also want to be sure that if we do do that, we do it in a thoughtful way and have a full review of, of our charter to see if there are other things that we should consider in that, in that, in that change of, of our charter. For instance, the lack of attendance in meetings or whatever. What I'd like to do with the board's permission is to form a committee that would review our options, take a look at the possible things that we should consider for a charter change, and make a recommendation to the board as soon as possible, certainly by, by our next meeting, which would then give us time to prepare the, hopefully prepare the necessary paperwork so that it could be on the March ballot. Does that make sense to people? Good. If, if, if so, let me give it some thought, and I'll get back to you. I want to talk again with, with Deana and Jim and anybody else that's interested in this process. So I'll be in touch. Okay, we can move on then to the superintendent's report.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Deana. Deana, I, I think we're, we're through with you.
Okay. Have a great meeting.
You're tossed out of better places, right?
Stay healthy.
Thank you, Deana. Good evening. Few things I want to discuss with you. First, I want to talk about the mold remediation project. The good news is that when the testing came back, there was no mold detected on the second floor of the 84 building, on the third floor of the 84 building. Based on comments we had received and concerns we had heard from the faculty in a meeting with the faculty, we also had the east campus tested, and those came back, those results also came back with no mold. So the project is limited to the bottom floor of the 1984 wing. And the, Tim, I understand you want to talk about the financial part of it.
Right.
In, in the, make, make a vote on that when you get to the financial part of the agenda. So the, the good news is that that, that project, if, if you award the bid tonight, and the contract is signed by the 20th of this month, the project should be completed by the 18th of December. And you should understand, you know, there's been some questions, can we be in the building when this happens? The area is completely contained in six mil plastic, and negative pressure machines are added so that nothing gets outs, outside of that tented area. So yes, it is safe to be in the building when it's being done. Our engineer will be, you know, you contracted with a, with an engineer, that engineer will be overseeing the project. And we also will have to have the air quality tested again during the project before the, before the tiles can be replaced. So I think the safeguards are in place to, to move that. And that will take care of the mold. And as you saw from the document you received, the, there were three bidders, and the range is vast, you know, somewhere around 58, 58,000 to 126,000. But our engineer has vetted the low bidder as being qualified and has the ability to do the work for the price that was quoted. So that, that is good news. One, that it's limited, and two, that the price came in much less than, when I first met with Secretary Dan French now almost two months ago to talk about an emergency provision to correct the problem, the estimates were ranging as high as $200,000 to remediate that. So I'm relieved that it is considerably less than that. So that will take care of the mold. We have to be vigilant to make sure that it doesn't come back, you know, as I've mentioned before, but it's worth repeating, if we turn on the unit vents in that floor in warm, humid weather, will bring in warm, humid air that then can't be vented or not easily vented. And the solution has been, there's dehumidifiers that need to be opened twice, emptied twice a day in those rooms. It works. I don't consider a long-term solution. So as part of upgrades to buildings because of concerns over ventilation from COVID-19, Efficiency Vermont has made funding available. All the schools in the, in the SVSU have been able to receive funds for that, including your middle school, but it's been very limited at the high school because of the complications of the engineering that's required to get Efficiency Vermont to approve work in a building as old as Mount Anthony High School. There is ventilation in the building. That is, you know, one thing that we, we did learn. Whether it is functioning is something that, that report came back. And as I mentioned, the report was 222 pages long, and it's really airflow charts. So Hayden Plumbing and Heating has requested that an engineer needs to be consulted to interpret what the proposals are with this. And I did hear from Director of Finance and Operations Renee Gordon this afternoon that she had a, prior to this meeting, had a, a meeting with Efficiency Vermont and the engineer with Efficiency Vermont that she sent to us. And there are some things that, if we can get it done under the funding deadline of December 30th, that we would be eligible, and that would be for the cleaning of the ductworks that are already in the high school, repair, you know, there are heat exchangers in the air for exhausting, in the building for exhausting stale indoor air and then bringing in fresh outside air. But it appears that somewhere in the life of the building, they were turned off. And my guess would be, you know, in the misguided attempt at energy, energy savings, a lot of, you know, some of you remember back when we really had some spiking oil prices and gas prices, a lot of buildings turned off and blocked ventilation, thinking why, why would I want to bring cold air when I'm trying to heat the building, not realizing the damage that, that that could do. So those, those units need to be investigated to see if they can be repaired. And they're also recommending that we repair or replace the unit ventilators that are in the building, because that's where the majority of the building gets their fresh air from. So that just transpired today. And if those, those three things would be eligible for reimbursement from Efficiency Vermont, if we can get at least equipment ordered before the December 30th. So Renee's been working with Hayden Plumbing and Heating as our contractor, and they've been doing work for us in Shaftesbury, at Congress Street, and in Pownell. But this report is going to require. Um, but this report is going to require, uh, an engineer. And whether we can, I think the three items I mentioned do that we can do now is about all we're going to get done under Efficiency Vermont. Um, or say maybe an air handle needs to be changed out. We might possibly be able to buy it to qualify for reimbursement. But whether we can get a contract or install it before that date is, is unlikely. And we should also understand that when that final big report, um, you know, engineer reviews it, there could be a recommendation for a true, you know, I don't want to panic anybody, revamping of, um, or upgrading of ventilation at the high school similar to what, uh, the Bennington Elementary Schools did, um, maybe four or five years ago now. And that was a $4.4 million bond to add ventilation to those buildings. But that also included upgrading the heating plants in those buildings and that may not be required at your building too early to tell. So, uh, as, as I mentioned before, there are, um, portable filtration units that are in areas that, uh, the Director of Facilities, uh, determined cannot be uh, vented. And if we need to purchase more of those, uh, in the meantime, we will. But those would not be, in some schools and at some parts of the high school, uh, Efficiency Vermont has reimbursed us for those units because there is no easy way to correct the ventilation. But they won't let us purchase them as a stopgap, you know, uh, measure in, in a building. So they're not, they're not the end solution. So I don't have all the information tonight on the ventilation project that I was hoping to have by the meeting. Um, because, um, Hayden Plumbing and Heating has, has content, they have a list of engineers, they work with Efficiency Vermont, also has a list of engineers that they could recommend to us. And, um, that, I have not received that report yet of, um, whether Hayden and the engineer have connected to see if we can expedite, um, some of this. So mold remediation, they're separate projects, but without taking care of one, uh, they could be connected in the future. Um, you may have heard that the Agency of Educa, uh, Agency of Education in Vermont, uh, has started this week something called Surveillance Testing of Staff for COVID-19. It is a, uh, a self-test. It's a kit that is shipped to schools. It's voluntary for the schools to do it. It's voluntary for staff to do it. We can't require anybody to do it. Um, our testing day is tomorrow. We didn't pick the day. The state did it. Um, staff had to sign up by noon time today. Um, told that there's 295 staff members who have signed up to be tested. So that's a little less than half of all our employees in the SU. Um, and, um, those tests were distributed, will be distributed tomorrow morning to, to the middle school by, I believe, the Vermont Department of Transportation with assistance from Vermont National Guard. Our maintenance staff will go to the middle school of all the school maintenance staffs, pick up the test kits, deliver them to the nurses in the individual school buildings. There's a, the, the kit that comes for the self-swab will have a label that needs to be attached. That will be supervised by the nurse. It's not a medical test. Our nurses are not doing it because it's a self-test. I'm sure this is why the state's doing it this way. Uh, protective equipment is not required, personal protection equipment is not required. You know, the nurses aren't required to gown up to do the test because they're not doing the test. Um, and then they'll be boxed up and by, um, 3:30 tomorrow afternoon, they have to be, uh, shipped by, um, uh, UPS back to Vermont Department of Health or the agency that's doing the testing for them. So, uh, we'll see how it goes. There were some snags today with the, uh, the registration link. So it, it is possible that not everybody that wanted to be tested were, were able to, to sign in, but the link's been open for a few days. So, uh, I, I have no way of telling here tonight whether it was 300 because of complications with the registration or it's 300 because that's all who wanted to take the self-test. It will happen again in December, we're told, but it won't be like everybody, it's, it's statewide this week. Um, some started their test on Monday and some will complete on Friday. And then in December, it's supposed to be 25% of the state, uh, each week will have this surveillance testing done for, uh, COVID-19. We are concerned, speaking of COVID-19, we are concerned about the, um, upcoming holidays and, uh, what will happen with travel. I, I did send you the memo that we sent out to, um, to staff about uh, the need to quarantine if you do travel and, and the impact if you travel. And that information will also be included in our newsletter to families this Friday and it'll be put up on our website and we'll monitor, um, the situation. There were reports of some school, uh, some school districts in the state, particularly north of us, that have, uh, made decisions to go fully remote, um, starting after Thanksgiving to the second week after the Christmas holiday. Uh, we're not at that position that we're considering that at this point. But as I've mentioned to you before, uh, the principals and the administration are concerned about staffing levels and that could be the failure of our system, forcing us to go back to remote. If we can't, uh, keep enough staff in the building, either because they need to quarantine or they're, uh, they're sick or they've requested leaves of absences. So it's again monitoring it and I will let you know if, if it gets to that critical point that, um, we may have to reshift. Speaking of reshifting, the Vermont Principals Association is allowing their, um, allowing practices to resume November 30th and then winter, for winter sports. And then winter sports begin sometime after the first of the year. Um, not 100% sure yet, but you should be aware that I'm probably pushing that back at least two weeks, the two weeks after, um, after the Thanksgiving holiday. Uh, let's give two weeks so that if anyone did travel, um, that, uh, I'm not putting any athletes who, you know, are, really want to play in the position that, um, they, they, they're free to reveal if they did travel without pressure, that it may impact their playing on their team. And that may come, you know, I may be a little ahead of the curve with, um, what Vermont VPA is going to do. I think they're supposed to be releasing updated sports guidance by Friday. And I know that the superintendents, we meet every Thursday with the Secretary of Education. And, uh, he did hint last week that there may be some change to that guidance. Because if you look at the guidance that came out from the Secretary of Education last night talking about, you know, say your board meeting, that you cannot physically meet as a board. There can't be public gatherings. We can't have staff meetings other than by Zoom. Uh, then I question them, and the only thing that's supposed to be going on in schools is, um, is instruction. Um, then, there you go. I don't know how I got muted, but, uh, it said the host muted me, but my hands are here. So, um, I, I, I believe that, you know, you'll be hearing from me that we're going to push back. I am in, uh, consulting with the Aflac Director and the principals about the impact of that and what it may, you know, may allow for signups and tryouts as we, but not practices until we, we, uh, put a little bit more distance to see what's happening. I mean, there is, as you know, a, a, a bit of a surge in Vermont right now. It's not as bad as in some other states and I hope that it's not going to get worse. But we're seeing a seven, at least a seven-day increase in cases. And though the state hasn't indicated, uh, that they're going to go back to phase two, uh, it's always, it's always a possibility. And, uh, well, hopefully I'll learn more tomorrow and then Friday when, if VPA updates their, um, their sports guidance. Um, so I think that's, um,
Tim, are you going to talk about, or the principal's going to talk about, what students are, are, are attending?
The principals are going to address that. Yeah.
Okay.
Nixon to address the, the reentry schedule. And I included a copy with you in my email to the board. So. Are there any questions on anything that, uh, that I've, I've spoken to so far?
Jim, I have a question. Fran Kenny, uh, what, do you happen to know what the reimbursement rate would be on the ventilation system, a percentage?
So, no, I don't, um, because it, it has varied, uh, with Efficiency Vermont that, um, and some they paid like 75% of the projects and some it was more like 50% I think. Um, because there are factors that they look at, Fran. Is it a, you know, more priority to an area that has the most students in it? So part of the projects they might pay almost 100% for and part of it, um, they'll give very little or nothing to. So it would be an average right now. But it's been, you know, as, as, as happened in Shaftesbury and Powell and Congress, it's, it's, it's been, um, a very, you know, well over 50% reimbursement.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, I have a question. Um, so next steps for the ventilation is you have the report and Hayden's asked for an engineer to be involved to interpret the report. And then the engineer will make recommendations about the scope of work? Do I have that right?
Yes.
And then we'll get an estimate from Hayden on the work?
And in the meantime, um, based on what we learned today, Amy, we're going to, uh, pursue a company that can do duct cleaning, which may be Hayden, maybe somebody else. What Efficiency Vermont, uh, told Renee today was that, um, a lot of schools did that earlier on so that companies that do that particular work may not be, um, as overwhelmed as, uh, the heating and ventilating contract is at right now. It's tough to get a contract. So that may happen. And then we will, uh, you know, we don't need an engineer for Hayden to look at repairing heat exchange or, um, uh, repairing, uh, unit vents to look at those. So I'm hoping that that could start, uh, quickly and we wouldn't need engineer. I, I'm seeing engineer, but you know, really if somebody would come back to this board with a, you know, a major proposal on the scope of, um, what the elementary schools did a few years ago and then the board side, you know, I, I have no idea what that would cost, you know, is that a bond issue you want to pursue? Or do you have enough money in reserve that maybe you could do part of it? Similar to how Shaftesbury has done over the years and, uh, in their elementary school. Um, so.
So the work that's starting now is the cleaning of the vents and the repairing of, uh, I mean, yeah, the cleaning of the vents and the repairing.
Contracted with anybody yet, but that would be something that I think that we could move forward with, without, with, with Hayden, without needing the engineer to interpret, um, uh, I'm sorry, but I'm forgetting the name of the company that did the, um, that did the study that now Hayden has. I'm, um,
Control Technologies.
Flow study. And I should mention that part of Efficiency Vermont is CO2 monitors, um, had to go in every school that was applying for the grants and, and it's just one monitor that then our Director of Facilities is supposed to move around the building, taking readings. And, uh, I have not been informed of any high reading, um, on actually any of our schools at this point on CO2 monitors. It's, it was just, it was a requirement from Efficiency Vermont to be able, to be eligible for the funding that we had to. They sent it. They, they paid for this, um, CO2 monitor to go into buildings and so nothing.
I have a question, Tim.
Yeah, go ahead.
Are we looking for a motion tonight, uh, to, for Jim to go ahead and, and make the contracts or?
Yes, we are. We'll do that. We'll do that during the financial, uh, section of, of the agenda. To approve the, the contractor to do, uh, to do the work. I think Renee is on here. She can explain to us a little bit more exactly what our options are.
Right. And may I suggest that, may, may I also suggest that if, uh, if some other possibilities, uh, come up between now and December, uh, well, now in the deadline, uh, that we want to, 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 uh, get funds for, from Efficiency Vermont, that we call it, uh, an emergency meeting?
You, we may have to do that. Uh, wouldn't be emergency meeting because we,
Special meeting?
We'd have to do it less than 24 hours, but it would be a special meeting that we would host if, if, uh, there's an, if it, we exceed a dollar amount money that, you know, level that we need your approval to move forward. Like say, say Hayden comes back and says, yeah, there's $100,000 worth of equipment that I can buy and have to live it into your building by December 30th, but we can't install it yet. And then Efficiency Vermont will ref, you know, give us, um, um, a contribution towards that, that purchase. Then we would be calling another board meeting if, if needed. We won't hesitate to do that.
Thank you. I, I have a second question, Tim. I, I'd like to know about the reliability of the self-test. I looked it up on the internet when, when, uh, when, uh, we were talking and it, it says it's almost as reliable as, as the regular test, the deep, deep nasal test. Uh, but, uh, they, they do have false positives. So, uh, does that person take another test or does that person take a deep nasal test or?
The guidance that I'm seeing, Jackie, if you get a, if you do get a positive, then you should go for another test. We, you know, consult with your doctor, but, um, but we would, if someone did come back and got a positive, even with the self-test, then, you know, we would require them to quarantine.
Thank you.
Are there other questions? If not, we can move on then to the next agenda item, which is public comments. Jim, are you handling that or is, um?
Uh, Frank is going to handle that.
Frank, Frank is going to, okay, Frank?
Yes, hi. Um, Megan, Megan Morgan Puglisi has her hand up first.
Thanks, Frank. Uh, good evening, MAU School Board members. My name is Megan Morgan Puglisi and I'm a math teacher at MAU HS. I am here once again to speak about the health and safety of the high school building. We happily anticipate the plans for mold remediation in the math hallway of the 1984 wing. We appreciate that you recognize the importance of this issue. However, staff remain concerned about other conditions of the building. While Mr. Colkeen has assured us that the building is safe, uh, we have not been told the specifics of what, what has been found. We want to make sure that our ventilation system is safe for the ninth graders to return on the 30th. Thank you for the update, Mr. Colkeen, on the report from Hayden. We would like to know why students are in the building when the main method of air exchange is not on, especially when that has, uh, has been seen as the most important ventilation component to combat COVID-19. Before the three jobs you mentioned are completed, how do we know that all classrooms have the recommended six cubic air per hour and a minimum of 15 cubic feet per minute per person in our building? You mentioned that Efficiency Vermont will not cover air purifiers for areas with poor ventilation instead of no ventilation. I implore the board to approve the purchase of more air purification units, ideally for every classroom in the school, but at least for the 24 classrooms in the older part of the building. Furthermore, we continue to have a bad mouth infestation, standing water in the music wing after heavy storms and the possibility of a staff coverage shortage if anyone needs to quarantine due to exposure. We have already seen one resignation and I suspect others will be coming since the high school is not approving remote work and the district is denying any unpaid leave requests. Staff are feeling their only options are to be in a building that is potentially unsafe and endangering their family members and students or resigning and losing their livelihoods. I implore the board to reexamine having a high volume of students and staff in an unsafe building during a global pandemic. Thank you.
Thank you. Frank?
Yep, Mary Jo Quaitek.
Thanks, Frank. Hi, Mary Jo Quaitek. I'm a teacher at the high school, um, and community member. And I'm sorry that the lawyer has signed off already because I had a couple of things I would have wanted to ask her. And number one is just for point of accuracy. She referred to the district as the Mount Anthony Union High School District and it's the Mount Anthony Union District includes the middle school. So just a point of accuracy. Um, also, um, Amy Dobson, you asked about if there are other, uh, towns that have things in their charter. I believe Springfield has something in their charter about, um, removing a school board member by, uh, the town citizens. I think they have to have like 15% of their citizens sign a petition and then some sort of process. I forget what it is exactly. And, um, the other thing I was wondering about is at the last board meeting, um, I believe it was, uh, community member Mia Schultz who brought up the idea that perhaps maybe a lawsuit to see how that could be, um, pursued. Not taking a lawsuit, but just, um, risking a lawsuit by, uh, the turnown. I believe that by being removed and I believe that the chair said he was going to consider that. So I just wondered, um, what his thoughts are on that. Um,
Right. I, I can respond to that. After, uh, seeking the advice of our attorney, she made it very clear to me that that is not an option for us. We cannot, she cannot, uh, file a frivolous suit. It, it is unprofessional and she could lose her license if she did. And this,
So I wasn't saying that you file a suit. I would, I was, I meant that you risk him filing a suit against the board if you just, you know, say you're removed. That's what I meant. I'm not saying that.
I, I really have not, I haven't gone into that in any detail. I'm sorry. I didn't realize that I'd said that I would, but I will look into it. Anything else? Very good. Frank? Thank you.
Yep, Mia Schultz.
Okay, well, I'll just follow up on what um Mary Jo Kwiatk said. Um so first of all, I just want to comment on your description of a lawsuit regarding human life as being frivolous. That's not frivolous, okay? I just want to make that clear. Second of all, I don't, I, I wanted to find out how you can project an equity statement and not stand up for equity. Um, what would happen tonight, right here, if you people who have power decided to choose humans over money? Decided to choose the students over money? What would happen? What, sometimes there are laws in place that don't really make sense and we have to be brave and we have to be courageous in times when it comes to humanity. And I am urging the board to look inside of their humanity, to look inside of, to the lessons that you are teaching the children, that humans are less important than money and lawsuits. And so when you're reconsidering whether or not you ask, well, when you're recon, when you reconsider that Ed Letourneau should not be a member of the school board any longer, that you consider the humanity of the students that you represent and the message that you send to them by choosing money over their humanity. Thank you.
Thank you. Frank?
Um, Megan Winslow and then Sarah Perrin.
So I just want to say, uh, sorry, I'm Megan Winslow. I am a teacher at the high school. Um, and I have essentially two questions. One question is for Mr. Colkeen and one of them is for um the board. Um, and so to follow up on Ms. Schultz, um, I do think that considering um to risk a lawsuit from Mr. Letourneau would send a strong message to our community and especially to our students that is needed. And I am also curious, at the last board meeting, I asked whether the board had any specific plans to publicly censure Mr. Letourneau and I was informed that you would discuss it and I'm wondering if a member of the board can speak to any updates on that? And then I'll ask my second question.
The, the board is, is determining the, the best way to deal with Mr. Letourneau. He has received numerous requests to resign. There is very little more that we can do. We are not in a position where we are comfortable going into a frivolous lawsuit against him. It just doesn't make any sense.
Is there a plan to publicly censure him?
We have not discussed that. I have not discussed that. We will, we will be discussing that, I'm sure, as we take a look at our options for a, a charter change.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I believe, I'm not, I wish Dina were here as well. I, um, I believe at the last meeting she said that there wasn't a means in our charter for censure. Like, there's no vehicle for that, is what I remember. Maybe someone else can refresh my memory. I don't, I don't, I can't remember.
Well, we, 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 the idea of censure has been presented to the board.
Okay. What I'm saying is that there, like, from what I recall, Jim, I don't know if you, I think you, you helped us with this a little bit or something that there wasn't, there's not a, there's not a, a, there's not a, there's no meat in our charter for, for that, I, from what I understand.
The board could take any vote they want.
Okay.
It, what weight does it carry other than symbolism? And I don't say symbolism lightly, because as at la- last month's meeting, you heard my position on this. So the board could take that vote, but what, if I remember correctly what Dina cautioned on, um, uh, if you had never voted to censor somebody before, make sure your, your reason, reason for it is clearly outlined. But the board can, board can take any vote that they want. Does it have any power or authority? Uh, no, you've already taken some action. You've removed him from committees, which the chair has the right to do that. Nothing would prevent you from taking that vote. Um, and it would, it would be symbolic, but that may also carry weight.
Thank you, Mr. Colkeen. Um, I do think that um making as strong of a statement as possible is important in this situation to send the message that we need to send to our community and to our students. Um, my second question is for Mr. Colkeen, um, and this is regarding the other issue that's being addressed tonight, which is regarding ventilation in the high school. Um, I understand that an engineer will be consulted regarding the changes that are needed. Um, but we are expecting students to return in, I think it's a week and a half, it's the thirtieth. And we, in fact, we have students returning as of this week. They are already in the building. There's a higher number. Um, we're just expecting the ninth graders in addition to that on the thirtieth. Um, and in addition, this week I have been informed that I cannot take my students outside to eat um in order to keep the, in, in the interest of keeping the hallways as clear as possible, which I understand. Um, I can't take my students outside to eat and as a result, we will be in our classroom with masks off during lunchtime in order to eat, which um with concerns around the ventilation in the building does concern me and I would say I'm, I'm a teacher that has been in the building since, since the beginning of the year. Um, and so can you confirm that all classrooms, all classrooms have the recommended six air changes per hour and a minimum of fifteen cubic feet per minute per person?
So, uh, as you may know, that those are guidelines and there is no regulations that govern vento, govern ventilation in Vermont schools. That may change. But right now, it's guidelines from uh the, I don't know what the acronym is for the American Association.
ASHRAE. ASHRAE.
Right. So they're not adopted by Vermont. It's not Vermont schools. It may be I, an ideal standard, but um, it's guidance and as I know that um, someone had filed with um, the uh Labor Relations Board that it was, and the, and the board declined to intervene.
Has the, have the air changes been measured?
That's, I believe, what the study was.
Okay. Um, thank you. I, I, I do think that even though it is not a requirement, it is a guideline, um, especially given the fact that we are going to be in our room during a period of the day with masks off in order to eat and that there is no other option to take students outside. Um, it does make me feel that the recommendation, even though it is not a requirement, should be followed.
Can I?
Thank you.
Can I, Tim, can I say something here?
Yeah, sure.
Um, first of all, why can they not go outside?
I was informed that this is so that, I, I was informed that this is so that we do not have students in the hallways. They want to, they want to reduce the amount of traffic in the hallways, which I understand. Um, but in, in doing that, we do not have the ability to go outside for the majority of classrooms in the building that don't have a direct access to the outside.
Um, my second, I mean, okay, I'll, I'll ask Dr. Nixon about that. My second question is, um, Jim, do the, do these classrooms where student, do all these classrooms have the ventilation um units that you bought? So that when they are in eating?
The, as I'm seeing in my report, the director of facilities determined where they needed to go and I have informed him if we need to purchase more, then we will. But the recommendation from Efficiency Vermont is that they do not go in every classroom.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good. Frank, are we, we have some more? Right, go ahead.
Yep, Sarah Perrin, please.
Hi, yes, Sarah Perrin, citizen and on the Bennington Select Board. I have two questions. Um, one is for the, a chair of the board. Uh, when is the last time you talked to Mr. Letourneau and requested his resignation? And also, what are you doing to extract the resignation of Ed Letourneau?
I have contacted him numerous times. Um, I finally, probably two weeks ago, decided that my emails and phone calls were not being answered and therefore, within the last two, it possibly could be a little bit more um time period, I, I have not, I have not uh tried, tried to reach him.
Okay, so the last time you contacted him was two weeks ago? Is that accurate?
No, I was, I was, I haven't been able to contact him in, in over probably six weeks. He has not returned my calls. He has not answered my emails.
And what was your last attempt?
Probably two weeks ago.
Okay. And your last email?
Excuse me?
Your last attempt via email?
That was two weeks ago. I can't remember whether it was a phone call or an email two weeks ago, but whatever it was, I'd have to go back and check. But I can, I can assure you that I have tried to reach him innumerable times and have had absolutely no response from him one way or the other.
Okay, also, what are you doing to extract the resignation?
Well, I have requested his resignation. That is about all that I can do. I don't have any legal authority to be able to demand he, he resign.
Okay, I guess so. Just let the record show that the last attempt to contact him was two weeks ago? Thank you, I appreciate that. Um, I do have another question for Mr. Colkeen. This is just regarding, this is regarding staff and COVID testing. I understand staff has to come in every day and um do COVID uh protocol, I guess, for lack of a better word. Um, just saying whether or not they have a sore throat, that sort of thing. So I'm wondering um if, you know, staff checks in and, and somebody says that they have a sore throat, but they're able to operate, but they're sent home because of just something that may feel like allergies, but they report that. Uh, are they able to go home and do, can, do some, do work at home? And if so, how does that affect their time off and affect their pay? Thank you.
We do self-screening and we also ask the questions, people enter the building and if they show symptom, report that they have symptoms, they go home and if able to, they work remotely. If they're working remotely, it does not affect their pay.
How would any of that affect their time off?
I don't understand the question. I said if they work, they work remotely, if they're diagnosed with sick, then they're taking sick time, which all teachers get.
Who would make the determination if they have to take off the time?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear what you said?
Sure, sure, yeah. Uh, is that a little better?
Yeah.
Okay, so who would make that determination if they have to take time off?
They would work with the principal and the director of human resources to make a recommendation.
Okay.
Our goal is to keep them working if they can work remotely as much as possible.
Right, right. Thank you.
Uh, Christina Hansen and then I think Rachel Blumenthal has her hand up, yeah. If you could put your hand up uh electronically, uh, that would be easier to keep track because rather than scrolling across the screens, folks, so. Christina and then uh, then Rachel.
Hi, um, I'm Christina Hansen. I'm a Bennington resident and um longtime teacher at Mount Anthony Union High School. Um, I have a couple of things I'd like to respond to um regarding the uh building uh ventilation uh conditions and the report from um the superintendent this evening. Um, first of all, I'm um happy that we have the report, the most recent report, so that we have a good uh baseline to work off of for the um conditions at the high school. Um, I think that it indicates a lot of things that are in need of improvement and um we have some clear steps that are going to be taken at the, from this point forward. Um, but I still have concern as have, we've heard from staff um working in the building of the conditions and whether we really implore the board and the superintendent to be thinking about uh whether we should be hesitating to have everybody um returning on the current timeline until um we get the work done from Efficiency Vermont um and the board takes action to improve, approve those improvements. Um, and I know that um the superintendent said that those are not legal mandates from the state of Vermont, but it's kind of like we don't have legal mandates or, or like consequences as citizens right now if we don't mask up or if like with the requirements around the upcoming Thanksgiving holiday. We, there are no legal consequences if we gather beyond our immediate family next week. But it's um incumbent upon us to do as much as we can right now to keep everybody safe in our community. And I would ask the school board to consider the recommendations from ASHRAE as being the best uh air quality that we could provide for the staff and our community's children right now in this pandemic. And if we can't have six air exchanges per um hour, which is the, the industry recommendation, uh, do we want to have zero? Which I'm hearing this latest report is saying that the um the mechanism for which that we would have outside and inside air um exchanged was turned off. So to me, that says we're not, you know, and I don't like, uh, Mr. Colkeen said, we're not, we're all not experts. But that just leads me to ask the question, so how much air exchange is there in these classrooms right now during the pandemic? And until we at least know that we have something better than a number than zero and the highest of six, I would like to know that we can comfortably be sending our educators, our support staff and our children, our young adults who transmit and spread COVID at the same rate as adults, that they are safe. And that is the conditions that everybody is feeling uneasy about being in this building. Um, and people in the staff, I think that listening to Megan Morgan Puglisi's statement was very important, that there are staff who are feeling that they cannot work in the building under present conditions and are requesting leave and the leaves is being denied. And so when I hear Mr. Colkeen just now, before I spoke, say that our goal is to keep people being able to work remotely as much as possible, that is not true. That is not happening. People are being asked, are asking to work remotely and that is being denied. People have resigned and more are going to resign. So what is going to happen to the quality of the education that we offer at Mount Anthony? What is the long-term implication for these policies? And for what will happen if we continue to have a staff that is worried about their health and the health of their students? If we don't take this seriously, the conditions in the school are important. And so my questions are, what is going to be done to seriously address the conditions that the staff are working under? There's putting them under serious mental health that affects their ability to deliver effective edu- education to the students? What can be? What can be done so that we know there's some kind of number between zero and six of air exchanges? And if Efficiency Vermont says you can't purchase these standalone air purifiers because you, Mr. Colkeen said that they won't let them purchase them because they're stopgap measures? Are we, you, they can't be purchased as stopgap measures? Is the building in a place where we are just purchasing things for stopgap measures? Should we be in a building where stopgap measures are being used? So those are my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Frank?
Yep, Rachel, Rachel Blumenthal, and then Laura Payne.
Um, I, I did ask questions that I was looking for answers. So to repeat them, the questions were, what can be done to address the staff's concerns that are affecting their ability to deliver effective education? Is there going to be something to make sure that we have air exchanges between zero and the top goal of six air exchanges per hour? And then the last, are we only doing stopgap measures to have effective air quality? So I would appreciate if, if somebody tried to answer some of those questions or I'll get back to you, something before you move to the next person. I know this is a hard time, but these are really important questions. Thank you.
Jim, do you want to respond, respond to that?
I gave my report, and if you follow the, your, your program, this is not a public discussion, this is public comment. So I take notes of what's being said and I'll respond in a reasonable manner. I don't want to speak off the cuff to questions, so I'm noting what's being asked and I'll be happy to get answers out. But to address it back to a point like this, I, I wouldn't be prepared to do that.
Right. I, I just want to remind people that public comments are, are an opportunity for the public to ask questions. They are not necessarily designed for immediate response from, from the board or from the administration. And as Jim has indicated, what, what we do is to write down, consider, and, and bring to our attention those issues that you have, have brought up. And we certainly will look into them. We're not trying to delay or, or put, put off, put off answering a question that in some cases we, we really don't have the answers to. The superintendent has given a full report on the recommendations from, that have been devised from the report that we received from the person that's taking a look at the situation in the school and, and we are acting upon it. The first thing we're doing is to, is to move ahead with, with the mold situation. And we will move ahead with the other issues that have been brought up as, in a timely manner. Frank, next person, please.
Well, with all due respect, in watching the board meetings, you do respond to people in public comments. And then sometimes you don't respond to people. So I'm not expecting you to respond right now, but you may want to go through and watch some of your, your meetings or look at your minutes and see that you don't follow the same procedure at every meeting. And as a citizen of this town, I just would like to point out that you may want to follow similar procedure from minute, from meeting to meeting. And perhaps you do want to, to comment and respond to people. And if you don't have a, an answer, it's fine to tell a citizen, I don't have an answer for you and I will get back. I appreciate Mr. Colkeen saying that I have noted your, your question and I will respond when I can. But to tell me that this is not the time to ask for a response when many people before me and in other meetings have gotten a response, I don't think that is the truth and that is not what I've seen in past meetings. And I feel like you're just shutting down my question right now and I don't feel respected. Thank you.
Thank you. Frank?
Rachel?
Welcome to my world, girl.
So I'm Rachel Blumenthal. I work in the early ed program. I just wanted to do just a couple of quick comments on the Ed Letourneau situation. This situation continues to be very concerning to me. I want to second the comments that Mia made and, and the ideas that she had. I was encouraged to hear Mr. Colkeen thought, taught that the board could vote on whatever they wanted and whether there was power behind or not. And I, I think that even symbolically, that would be a huge step. I just want to say that this situation is, it really warns all of us on every level, doing whatever we can, whatever we have means to do to get Ed to resign from this board because obviously his vision and mission is very different than the schools. So I would hope that the board would really pursue taking a vote on that issue. Thank you.
You? Frank?
Laura Payne?
Good evening. I just wanted to, to echo the, the comments or boost the comments of Mia, Rachel, and Megan about Ed Letourneau. I mean, it's very tiring to have to keep going through this. What Mia said about you guys projecting an equity statement but not protecting equity really rang true for me and my husband Dave. And I also would encourage you to take that symbolic vote or take the vote, whether it's symbolic or not, this evening about Ed and however you want to word it. I, I continue to be disappointed in, in some of the discussion about Ed and the, the word of Tim used frivolous. And I'm just wondering, to me, what's frivolous was when you, the board members that have heard Ed speak like he's spoken in private, in conversations when no one was listening. And why that wasn't a problem then? Anyway, thank you. I would encourage you to take that vote tonight.
Thank you.
Yep, Megan Winslow, and then Sarah Perrin again.
I just had a clarifying statement with regard to Sarah Perrin's previous questions. My understanding at the high school, as of this week, when all teachers were asked to return to the building for in-person work, whether they had students in their classrooms or not, was that if you have a COVID symptom, even if it is mild, even if in a normal situation, you would be working because that's what teachers do. They push through and they work through head colds and, and all kinds of things. So I understand that we would be teaching, or sorry, we would be taking sick days in that situation and we would not be able to teach from home, even if we were able to.
Is, is that a question or is that something you want to have?
That is, that's a state, no, that's a statement. It's a clarifying statement. Mr. Colkeen had mentioned that he was of the understanding that teachers would be allowed to work remotely if they were mildly sick, if they had mild COVID symptoms. But that is not my understanding at this time as a teacher in the high school. We're required to take a sick day.
Sarah Perrin?
Yes, thank you. And thank you for that clarification, Megan. I think I would request that that policy be revisited. Yeah, as our, our community really needs the teachers now and always. Please reconsider looking at that. And also I want to ask the Chair, would you commit to the committee report by the next meeting? Thank you.
Committee report? I'm not sure what you're referring to.
I'm referring to the committee that you want to form when you were talking about the charter change?
Right, okay. We, we will, we'll have a meeting. I, we will make every effort to, to move that along as quickly as possible. The committee will, will decide that. Excuse me?
Can you commit to that at this time or no?
Well, I, until the committee meets and decides what they want to do, I cannot definitely say that we will have it. Whatever they decide they want, information they want to gather may take more time than, than is allowed before our next meeting. I don't know. We will make every effort to report to the community at our next meeting on the committee's decision on which direction to go and what, what should be covered and how to go about doing it.
I urge you to try to do that. Thank you.
Frank?
I see no more hands at this point.
Okay. I, I think that some of the questions that people have may be able to be answered hopefully by, when we have the principals' reports. So if there are no other questions, I'd like, like to move on.
One more question, one more question, real quick.
Good.
Thank you. It will be quick. And it's actually directed at you. Because I noticed that you keep your camera off. And if this were an in-person meeting, we would get to see your face. We would get to see your expressions and your body movements and all of those things. So I think that it would be respectful of you to show your face.
I have no idea what, how that all works. That we leave that up to the person that is managing this. I don't know if I haven't pushed the right button or, or something. I assume that I would be on it, but I, I gather I'm not.
I guess you have to figure that out.
Yeah, I do. Someone will help me with that. Okay, we can go on then. If there are no other questions, I'd like to go on to the Finance Committee. Renee, are you there? Renee Gordon?
Yes, yes, I'm here.
Okay, thank you. Would you just run through the, the, the issue that we would like to vote on to award the contract for the removal of mold? My understanding, I misplaced the, the sheet of paper. My understanding is that it's around $56,000, something like that. Would you just go over that so that the proposal is, is crystal clear?
Sure. MSK Engineering and Design worked with Legacy Environmental Consulting. They're the ones that came in to do the testing. On a work plan, they put a scope together and pre-selected qualified bidders. We had three bidders respond. One was MCS Cleaning with a bid of $123,500. Catamount Environmental came in with a bid of $81,000. And Serve Pro of Bennington and Rutland Counties came in with the low bid of $56,599.50. As Mr. Colkeen noted, MSK did actually reach out to Serve Pro to confirm that they had complete understanding of the scope and the ability to perform the services as they, they've been outlined and detailed in the spec and the work plan. They confirmed all of that and therefore the recommendation of MSK is to award the bid and the resulting remediation work to Serve Pro of Bennington and Rutland Counties in the amount of $56,599.50. We do have a draft contract ready if the board so chooses. And again, the, the date of completion in our specifications is required to be no later than December 18th.
Very good. I just thought I'd clear on this. Is MSK going to be supervising that work? Or how do, how are we assured that the work is done to the specifications that have been outlined?
That is, that is correct, Tim. They will be onsite during the remediation to confirm that they are.
I didn't need the engineer in the first place.
Yep.
Okay. We need a motion then. What is the name of the, of the outfit that will be doing the work?
Serve Pro.
Serve Pro. Do we need a motion then to accept that, that bid?
I'll move it.
Do we have any further discussion on it? If not, all those in favors, excuse me, go ahead.
Tim, I, I, I think what the last question was, is, is there a clerk of the works?
Well, the clerk of the works would be MSK, who would be, in my understanding.
The engineer will function in that role.
Yeah, they would, they would be functioning in that role. Any other questions? I'm sorry, I may have missed something. Does, does somebody else have a question? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Very good. We need a motion to accept the treasurer's report?
Some of them.
And we have a second? A second, please?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed or abstentions? We can move on then to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion?
Some of them.
You have a second? Very good. Do, do we have any, any discussion on any of the items in the consent agenda?
Am I had a question about an item, a line on one of the warrants for Renee, if she's there?
I am here.
There's, and I'm not looking at it now, but there's an expense identified as a payment to be, to Burn Burton for, I think it was described as public tuition, something a little less than $10,000, if I recall. Can you just explain what that's for? And, and then, and I was, I was asking because I, when a student from our district attends an independent school, I wasn't, I, I didn't realize that there would be a tuition payment involved from our district.
That is the regular tuition portion of the tuition for a student that's attending based on placement of an IEP.
Thank you.
That's, that's a good question. I just want to clarify that so that people understand that that money is directly related to an, to an IEP, an individual plan for a student. It is not a, a general contribution for people that want to attend another school. Okay? Are there any other questions on the consent agenda?
Tim?
Yes.
Fran, just want to notice that Dave Berio, Dean of Students, will be retiring this year. So I don't know how long he's been there. I know it's been a long time. He's done an excellent job. So I just want that to be.
Since 1979, Fran, I'm informed that he has been here. And we will make sure that, we see if we can get him to a, he's going to be here till, I believe the end of January, but maybe we can get him to a board meeting so you can all express your gratitude to Dave.
Good.
If he isn't to die about it.
Thanks for bringing that up, Fran. I was planning to, to do that, but good, good reminder. We still have not voted on the consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed or abstentions? It passes then?
Just a point, just a point of clarification. I didn't hear a second on it.
We had a second. Did you, did you, did you get a second?
Yeah, well, I, I thought I've got Fran did the first and Ron did the second.
Right.
That's right.
Right. Okay, thank you both. So we, that motion has passed now. We have no policies or committees. We go down to the administrator's report and we'll start with Steve Nixon. Steve?
Thank you, Tim. This evening, what I did was real quickly give an overview of the return plan for students coming back into the building. Approximately two weeks ago, we brought selected students back into the building. These were primarily special education students who were having difficulty learning in a remote environment. A lot of them were programmatic students, so they were brought back approximately two weeks ago. This past Monday, we brought an additional group of students in who were recommended by either clinicians, special education, the guidance department, by parents calling the school. And that has brought the, the number of students currently in the building to approximately 100 students. The goal moving forward as of now, The goal moving forward as of now is for us to return freshmen to the building on the Monday after Thanksgiving week, which is November thirtieth. Uh, we have informed parents of that. We, uh, we are sending another letter out tomorrow to reemphasize some of the key points, uh, what we've done, because it's hybrid learning and we cannot accommodate every student in the building at the same time due to social distancing. Uh, we have broken the returning students up into two groups, the red team and the blue team. The blue team are in the building on Mondays and Tuesdays. The red team are in the building on Thursdays and Fridays. Uh, so in the letter, it also tell if parents have forgotten what team their, their child is on is to give us a call so we can inform them what days their students will be in the building. Um, also the fact that, uh, we, no child should arrive at the building prior to eight o'clock because, uh, we don't want to overlap teacher screening and, and students, uh, screening. And when students arrive in the building, under state guidelines, they are to immediately proceed to their first period class. So we have to ensure that there are teachers in the building to accommodate them when they arrive in the room. Uh, the letter will then go on to, uh, detail how that process works. I mean, school will be running from eight-thirty until two o'clock every day. Wednesdays will remain asynchronous, which means students have, uh, teacher contact remotely on Wednesdays. Uh, there are three entrances being used for screening. Uh, there is the bus door, which leads into the cafeteria that will screen all students who are arriving by school bus. There is the, the main entrance for students who, uh, walk up to the building or drive themselves. And there's an express door, which any student who gets driven by the parent, there is a nurse at the circle who will, uh, administer the COVID check-in with the child in the car. And then the child will be, uh, stickered. We give green stickers which show that they've been cleared. And then they are sent through the express door. They don't have to go through the main door because they've been checked out, uh, at the circle. When they're, when they check in, all students have to have a mask. They have to maintain social distancing. There will be the COVID screening questions and they will have their temperature taken. Uh, any child who does not pass the screening will be placed in the isolation room, uh, according to, uh, state procedure. And their parent will be called to pick up their child, uh, to pick them up and take them back home. Uh, that is the reason why parents who are driving students to school, we're doing the check-in at the circle, because parents can stay in the car while their child is checked. And if there's any issues or any symptoms, the parent can still drive the, uh, child home immediately and doesn't have to return. Um, breakfast will be, uh, served. There will be a, a grab and go breakfast at, at every doorway. So as a child comes into the building, they can grab their breakfast. Uh, lunches will be served. Uh, they will be delivered to each classroom. There are tables now placed out in the halls outside classrooms, uh, the lunches be placed there. And then the teachers will have the timeframe in which lunch will occur. Uh, we're still working on specifics, uh, with the, with the Abbey Group about which floor will get delivered first and work through a schedule that way. Um, what else do I have? Students are required to, uh, to bring their Chromebooks to school, uh, and take them home at night, because if for some reason, knock on wood, we have to go back to any remote, uh, learning, the child has to have their, their Chromebook with them at all time for that. Uh, dismissal is two o'clock. We ask that parents do not try and, uh, pick their child up prior to two o'clock because that means the class will be interrupted and, uh, for the child in order to be brought down. And we're trying to keep this as normal as possible, so if a child has to be removed early for a doctor's appointment, the same procedure that has always existed, uh, the parent will call the school, we will clear it, and then the child will be brought down for the parent to pick up early. We recommend to parents that if your child is feeling ill at home prior to coming to school, that they keep them home, because if, if they are feeling ill and some of the illness is attached to the symptoms of COVID, when they get to school and they announce that to the, the school nurse, they'll be sent home anyway. So rather than have that happen if your child is ill, to make sure that you keep them home. When the freshmen come back, uh, there'll be one group coming into the building for the first time on Monday. The second group will be coming into the building for the first time will be on Thursday. Plan to do some form of, uh, orientation with them, uh, to basically break them off in groups of ten throughout the course of the entire day, so there is no commingling in the halls as we give them a tour of the building and, uh, answer all their questions, show them where the gym is and the cafeteria, uh, because they may not be using those, those rooms at the present, but they need to know where those are and to answer any questions they have, because as freshmen, obviously, they're going to be nervous, uh, coming into a school they've never been before with new classmates and new teachers. Um, and basically, uh, that's how it's going to progress. Uh, we are then going to monitor and analyze, uh, how that, how that works. And if, for the two weeks that the freshmen are back in the building, it proves to be successful and we don't run into any bumps in the road, uh, then we'll then, over that two-week period, have discussions of how we're going to proceed if we're going to bring additional groups back into the building. Uh, so, uh, again, if any parents who are, uh, may be listening or any, anyone here uh, has any questions about anything whatsoever, they're not sure, feel free to call the school at any time and, uh, we will make sure that your question gets answered. So that's it. That's a quick overview.
Steve, thank you, Steve. Are there any questions from the board of Steve? Steve, I have, I have just, just one. Um, in terms of the staffing, when these students do return, are you going to be aware early enough in the day to be able to be sure that we have the proper number of staff in the building to be able to carry out their responsibilities?
If, if, we have a, we have a electronic system called Frontline. And, uh, the way that that works is we review Frontline and it gives us a list of teachers who are out for the day. Uh, some teachers who are out, contact other teachers and put down into Frontline that they don't need a substitute, uh, that someone from their, uh, department will cover for them. Other teachers will put in that they do need a substitute. Uh, we have a person who sort of runs around in the morning, uh, trying to ask people if they will volunteer. Uh, at this point, we don't know. We've had ten absences, uh, each day since we brought students back on Monday. And, uh, we've been able to cover those. Uh, but even, even on days when, before COVID hit, if, if there's a, if the flu is going around, for example, and we have eighteen teachers or so out, it, it could get difficult. So from what I hear, are, there are some, there are some people who are signing up to be substitute teachers and they're in the, the training process, from what I hear. So that will help us considerably.
Thank you. Are there any other?
Yeah. Yeah, I've got some questions. Hey, Steve, thank you for that. Um, my questions are around, um, what Ms. Winslow brought up about eating outside for, for lunch? I mean, that just seems like such an easy, I mean, okay, let me stop right there. Not easy. I'm not trying to say it's easy. It seems like a very, um, good solution for teachers who are willing to do that and able to do that. And I just like to, I mean, everything you're navigating, I'm, I'm not, I, I understand the gravity of, of all the planning you're going through. Um, but if you, if there's a way to make something like that happen, I think that the, the benefit for all sorts of, um, for mental health and for physical health could just be really.
Well, to.
Just have such a good payoff.
Yeah, to be honest with you, I don't, I don't know who gave that specific information to me, again. It's not a hundred percent accurate. Uh, the reason, the reason that you can't arbitrarily just take your kids outside for lunch is when we put these plans in place, we put these plans in place so they stay in place. We don't want to continually keep changing the rules and confuse everyone. So basically, we're, we are looking at, our first goal, we weren't bringing back small groups, if you remember. Our original goal was to bring the freshmen back until we had to shut the building down. So those plans were put in place. And on the thirtieth, when the freshmen come back, you're looking in excess of three hundred students in the building. If teachers just took their students on their own to lunch, then you have students congregating on the stairways, meeting in the hall. And we purposely came up with only one transition in the entire school day, which means there's only one point in the school day where, where students are out in the hall, because we were told that the greatest possibility of contraction is when you have masses, massive groups of, of students out in the hall. So if teachers just arbitrarily took their students to lunch, you would be recreating the problem we were purposefully trying to solve. So the, the rules are, if your classroom has an outside, direct outside door, you do not need permission. You open the door, you can take your students right outside because you do not have to use the hall. For teachers who do not have a direct access outside, they just need to call the office and tell an administrator, and then the administrator will schedule them to go outside, so that it's an organized departure from the building and not mass chaos in the hall.
Okay. That's great. That's good information. I'm sure that's helpful. Um, and then my, my last thing real quick is it sounds like that there's, um, oh, some confusion, um, about understanding sick days and how the high school staff is going to be required to take those. If you could, I mean, you don't need to address it here, but if, I just like to bring awareness to that, that if.
It's my, my understanding, it, it's not a high school, it's a, it's a district policy for absence. Now, if, if a teacher is out sick, they're out sick and they take a sick day, because it's, we're in a COVID crisis, it's no different than a regular situation. When teachers were sick, they called in sick, they didn't teach. But now that we have remote possibilities, we've contested, we kept it the same, is if a teacher is sick, our goal is for the teacher to get better and come back to school, so they take a sick day. Now, the only exception to that, in my understanding, is there are some situations when teachers are placed in quarantine situations where technically they're not sick. It's just that they are kept in quarantine to see if they might be sick. So if they are not sick and they have to stay home for fourteen consecutive days, they are able to teach. So that, that's the difference between the two.
I guess all I'm saying is, is that something's being lost in translation, that information isn't getting to where it needs to get to. So I don't know what needs to be done there. I don't, I'm not in your role, but if, if there's a way that the teachers and administrators could come together so that that understanding is established, I think that'd be really helpful. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Uh, uh, excuse me, are there any other questions for Steve? Steve, I hope you will stay there in case, uh, as we talk to Tim, uh, other issues come up that you may want to comment on. Tim?
Hello?
Hello, Tim, you're on.
All right. Um, just want to, I'll do a couple of things and then if folks have questions for me, I'll do my best to answer. Uh, just a reminder to middle school families that trimester one at the middle school comes to an end, uh, this Friday, the twentieth. Report cards will most likely be mailed in the week after Thanksgiving, so folks can start paying attention to the mail for that. A reminder to all my students and to their families that, um, next week, Monday, the twenty-third, Tuesday, the twenty-fourth, Wednesday, the twenty-fifth are in fact school days. We occasionally have students tell their folks that, no, we have a whole week off for Thanksgiving, that's not true. So just to be clear for folks, that if you're a student who is member of the blue group, um, you will be in person, you will be attending school as you always do on Monday and Tuesday. If you're a member of the red group, um, you'll be remote on Monday and Tuesday as you have been practicing. Uh, Wednesday, the, is a half-day before the start of the Thanksgiving weekend. Um, we're going to send, I sent an email to parents last Friday, I'm going to send it again this, this Friday. Students are asked to log into their Google Classroom for their advisory. There'll be a question of the day, that's for attendance purposes. And then the only other thing that we're asking students is to make sure that you're checking with your core teacher Google Classrooms as you always do on Wednesday to make sure that you're caught up with your work. Um, and that is the, um, that is the expectation. For moms and dads, it is a, technically a half-day, um, but will be asynchronous, so we can work that out. Uh, I wanted to, uh, tell the board and, uh, welcome, uh, we have a new social studies teacher in the middle school in the seventh grade. His name is, uh, Stephen McCullough. He joins us from the West Coast. We're very happy to have him joining us. Um, we are still searching for a long-term sub for a math teacher on our eighth-grade, uh, Oasis team, uh, but the position right now is being, uh, covered by a licensed teacher who is retired as a substitute and the department is providing lessons for those students. So, uh, we continue to search for that person. Uh, Mr. Colkeen already covered this, the testing process for staff and teachers tomorrow at the middle school. I just wanted to say thank you to the school nurses, um, Ashley Walker at the middle school organizing that tomorrow. Um, I also want to thank Ms. Tetra, who is a school nurse at the high school. She's come over and provided coverage on the days that Ashley hasn't been able to be in the building. I just appreciate the, um, the support from the high school. I also want to thank, uh, Lisa Pesino, a support staff member from the high school staff, who came over and helped us for the last couple of weeks, uh, in some coverage situations, so we really appreciate the flexibility. And then the last thing, I just, this is a seasonal reminder, uh, we had our first really cold day in the last two weeks, um, and I had, had students showing up in crocs with no socks, um, uh, shorts and T-shirts. They may be your favorite thing, but just want to remind moms and dads to encourage kids to take a coat and a hat and sometimes gloves, because at the middle school, we have built-in mask breaks during the school day, so we encourage students to be going outside, uh, two, three, four times a day with their classes, with their cohort. And by wearing a coat, wearing a hat, we can extend those opportunities farther into the winter, which is good for everybody. If students, I want to be clear though, if families and students are finding it difficult to find a, a, a coat that is warm enough for the winter, hats, gloves, boots, we do have those resources at the middle school. Families can reach out to counselors, they can reach out to administrators, you can reach out to teachers. We talked about this at our staff meeting today. If kids pull you aside and say, hey, you know, I outgrew my coat, my boots are worn out and they need that help, we can do that, we can do that discreetly and privately. So I just encourage families, as we get into the colder months, should you need that resource, then we can help at the middle school. And that, I'll stop there.
Okay. Tim, uh, the, the same question that, that I asked Steve, um, are you confident that you have the staff necessary due to either sicknesses or, uh, a, a desire to, to, to not come into the building to properly supervise and offer the educational opportunities that you'd like to be able to offer, uh, at the present time?
So currently, I am fortunate, uh, we are able to use support staff to physically staff, uh, rooms if a teacher is not there physically present. Uh, and then using Google Classroom and, you know, lesson plans, kids can continue to have their education during the day. I've also been fortunate, I have two, sometimes three consistent subs who will come to the middle school on most days. So at this point, we've been able to cover, um, any of the, uh, the coverage needs that we had. I, I have to say, in the last two weeks, I haven't probably seen quite the numbers that Steve's seeing, uh, but I've had a couple of days where I had, you know, five, six teachers out and we've been able to cover that at this point.
That's good. Do other board, do any other board members have questions for either, uh, Steve or Tim? I, I have one last question, and this actually is directed to both of you. In the general learning process with all that's been going on, how confident are you or, or what would be your analysis of the, the progress that the students are making as compared to a regular year or a year in which we are not dealing with the COVID problem?
Steve, you want me to give it a, a whirl first?
Maybe he's, maybe he's left us.
No, he's here.
No, go ahead, Tim.
So, I, I, you know, we're, we're finishing, uh, trimester one at the middle school, and I have to tell you, I've, I've got a couple of concerns. Um, we're, we're in the midst of collecting the, the, you know, the numbers, the data, uh, so what are we looking at? Uh, how many kids have chosen to go remote? Um, and I'm going to tell you that at, per the grade level, grade six, seven, and eight, it's about, it's anywhere from twenty to twenty-five percent of the class is remote at this point, which means kids are doing all of their learning from as a, a location outside of the building. Um, and what we want to do, what we're in the process of doing is gathering the numbers of saying, okay, those kids who are doing school completely remote, how successful are they? And then the second number I'm really interested in, and we're in the process of kind of sifting through that at, at the end of the trimester, is how many kiddos are struggling across multiple subjects, maybe all subjects? Um, our purpose is, is then to have conversations during December. Our purpose is then to have conversations during December and make some changes. Like, what are we gonna do to help kids be successful from the January to June run so that they can move on to the next grade and move on to the next school? So, we're in the process right now of just collecting the data, and I have to, honestly, Tim, I have some concerns. It's a lot of kiddos that are not in a building and not seeing a teacher on a daily basis. Moms and dads working hard to give them an education and that's a struggle. I also worry about the kids who are just not connecting with school in any meaningful way. Renee Gordon and I had a conversation my first budget meeting last week, and she did a nice job of reminding me that, you know, "Hey, what's summer school gonna look like this year?" Because we didn't have summer school last year. We weren't able to open the building, we weren't able to give that remediation and support to kids. So, I think that's, those kinds of conversations we're gonna have to have in December and come back with a plan to go back and scoop up those kiddos who are really struggling to be successful in school. And that's gonna be a lot of work. But like I said, we had our faculty staff meeting today, we invited everybody, paraprofessionals and teachers, and we definitely talked about how much work is gonna happen, and I already have people sending me notes about ideas and stuff, so that's what we're gonna be working on, that's what we're looking at.
Thank you. Steve, would you like to comment on that, please?
It's very, very similar to what Tim had to say. It's 100% remote is not optimal. And it's ironic that some students who are successful right now remotely historically weren't successful in the building. And students who were successful in the building don't necessarily translate to being successful remote. One of the issues is, it's hard for us to determine exactly what the issue is remote, whether students are having difficulty technological-wise. I mean, if there's issues that they don't have internet service or computers, that we can take care of. But do students have the self-motivation to work alone? We don't know what their family life is. Some students may have parents with them while they're doing this and help them along. Some students may be doing it all by themselves. So it's really hard to analyze what the cause is. There are some concerns that a lot of students may not be successful 100% remote. We're putting a lot of faith in the fact that making contact with adults again when they come into the, back into the building will be much more successful with opening dialogue between teachers and students and for them to get help. So until we get students back into the building, we really need to look at the data at that point and where we're gonna go from there.
Thank you, Steve. Are there any questions from board members for either Tim or Steve?
I have one, and this is, either one could answer this one, but have you tried online tutors for students? Either from the tutorial center or from, maybe volunteers from the community? Many people are sitting home alone anyway, and I think many of them, even myself, I'd be glad to be connected with someone and help them out. I couldn't do math, though, don't ask me to do the math. But I can do a lot of other things. And peer-to-peer tutors, maybe you need to set up a peer-to-peer tutors because some kids in school team up together and whether it's at lunchtime, before or after school, and they share their work. And have you considered those things?
We have a situation where if students are having difficulty, the guidance counselor then connects with the student. And we have mentors at the high school, which are adults who work with students who are having difficulty in classes, and we also have interventionists. So, like for example, in math, we have math labs and things like that. So if students are having difficulty, usually it's picked up by the counselor and then the student is referred to one of those areas.
Tim, I would just add too that we have several teams who are teachers offering office hours specifically, and then reaching out to kids with email and saying, "Hey, I'm gonna be available at this time to help you with schoolwork." I have to tell you, it's been a really mixed bag as far as kids checking in and using that resource. So, but tutoring has definitely been brought up by staff as well. How do we make ourselves available, Tim? I think what staff are looking for now is bringing kids in physically to see them, thinking that, providing that physical space where a kid can feel one-to-one and not have to navigate it through technology is that people are hopeful that that's the next step for kids. But remote is proving to be a challenge for quite a few of our learners.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? If not, we will move down to the chair's report. First, Jim, this date change, what do you have in mind there?
Not a date, you just, after you reorganize every match, you publish the meeting schedules saying that you're gonna meet the, what are we, on the, the third Wednesday of the month at 7:00? You've adjusted, with COVID, you've adjusted your meeting time. So after consulting with our attorney, she's recommending that you should vote, if you're gonna continue to meet at 6:00, you should vote tonight, and then we will republish that, that you will meet the third Wednesday of the month at 6:00 PM until you reorganize a match, and then we'll publish what all those meeting dates are and the time.
Very good, does it, I understand. Does anybody have any questions with that? Is 6:00 a reasonable time for everybody? If not, I...
Maybe you need to check with Leon because he might have a game.
Well, that's, he's not here, we want to move ahead with this, I will check with him.
There may not be games.
Yeah, that's right.
Tim, just, maybe somebody can speak to why we're meeting at 6:00 rather than 7:00?
Just, it's a matter of convenience, particularly for administrators, to be honest with you. It, I suppose if it's COVID, it doesn't make that much difference.
You met even earlier than 6:00, I think you had a 5:00 meeting and all, and then 6:00, I mean, where was kind of a compromise. Tim is right, your principals have worked a full day today, so if we can get them home an hour earlier so they can go to work tomorrow, I'm sure they would appreciate it.
Are there any other comments on that?
I'd like to make a motion.
Does anybody have a difficulty with keeping the time at 6:00? Amy, that's all right with you?
Yeah, I think anything after 5:00 is appropriate for people who work. Anything, I think, nothing, yes, 6:00 is great, yes.
6:00 is comfortable. So let's leave it at 6:00, we have a motion, Jackie?
Yes, so moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed or abstentions? Okay, the next item of business is selecting a committee that would review how we will handle the recommendations that were presented to us on the charter change, and also review other ways that we may want to respond to comments made concerning Ed Letourneau. What I'd like to do is to have those members of the board that would be willing to serve on that committee to respond by email to me so that I have it in front of me. I can then take a look at it. My feeling would be to have a relatively manageable committee that could meet and move forward on this rapidly. And I will make the decision as to who is on that committee, appoint a chairman, and move as quickly as I hear responses from board members. Does everybody understand that?
Yes.
And I also would like to, at the same time, I'd like to take a closer look at those issues related to this that we should be discussing at the same time. For instance, do we want to take a look at the full charter to see if there are other things in it that should be addressed? Do we want to move ahead with some sort of a board comment on Ed's behavior that we all would sign on to? And I'd like to move ahead on those things. And that committee will be responsible for reporting to the board or making a recommendation to the board, and we can then vote on it and move ahead as the board wishes. Does anybody have any questions on that? Very good. Are there any other, excuse me?
Tim, does the charter exist somewhere that's easily findable? Is it on our website?
I don't think so.
On our website, but I can get copies to the board. I'm told it's like four pages long, that's it. It's not a substantial document. So I have seen a copy, but I don't have it in front of me.
Right.
It's a timed out document, so we'll get a copy to the board.
We'll get a copy, and, you know, I'm sure the committee will be looking for suggestions from all board members as to what should be their charter and what should be their challenge. And we'll move ahead on that.
Hey, Tim, could I share something here? I just wanna, I think that's fine about the committee to explore charter change. I'd like to, if not tonight, commit to it next month's meeting, move forward with some sort of censure, some sort of language from the board. I don't know if you want to pull that out separately, but I don't want it to get wrapped up in a whole, you know, month, couple months long.
Sure, I understand, I think I understand what you're saying, Amy. My thought is that we did, at an earlier occasion, we did ask the board to sign on to something like that, and to be honest with you, there was some concern about some board members about whether that was the right way to go. My feeling right now is to speak with Deena, have her prepare a statement that would reflect the board's feeling, at least my interpretation of the board's feelings. Send it to the board for their approval and be able to approve it at our next meeting.
Okay.
That makes sense.
Are there any other questions?
Well, I have just one, Dave, what was the, what was the, I don't have a copy of what you read last meeting.
You're asking me, Jackie?
Yes, yes, yes.
Yeah.
I can get your copy of that, Jackie, you did all get that, the statement that the administration put out?
Yes, that the board signed on to.
Yes.
Yep.
So, I think it's in the minutes too, Jackie.
Yeah, but I can resend it, can you make it easier?
Okay, so I guess that's why I'm wondering why we still need to ask for a censure since we've already made a statement.
Well, I think that people, I think it should be up to the board. It would be more directly related to Ed Letourneau rather than an overall statement affirming the board's commitment to running a a board that is conscious of diversity, ethnic diversity and that sort of thing. The statement that we all signed on to is a pretty generic statement as opposed to a statement that is directly related to Ed.
And how about this statement that, well, we didn't do it this year, but in previous years, boards seemed to do it, the Code of Conduct that is written by the Vermont Board?
I'm not really sure, I'm not really sure what you're talking about. I don't doubt that there is such a thing, but I, anyway, can you explain that a little more further?
Sure, I know it's at the CDC, we sign it every year, and it's called the Code of Conduct. And I'll get you a copy of it, and maybe...
Association, right, Jackie?
Yes, from the School Board Association.
Okay, but I think that the question that has been presented to the board for consideration is a direct statement that would relate to Ed Letourneau. And if in fact that is what we want to consider, then I think we should consider it, and the board can make a decision as to whether they want to send such a censure notice. Okay, are there any other questions?
Tim, I had a couple of comments not related.
Yeah.
This is good. I wanted to, first of all, I wanted to come back to what Chris Hansen said about public comment earlier. I think, I want to validate what she's saying, that the public comment, since we've gone digital, has turned into a conversation. And I think as a board, we need to revisit and commit to either public comment being a one-way situation where public is making comment, like we've done when we were in person. Public makes a comment. The board or the administrator takes note of the questions, and then we get back at the next meeting with an answer. Or if we want to change that and make it a conversation as we have since we've gone digital, then we need to, we just need to make a commitment one way or the other because right now it's very confusing. And I know personally, I don't know if I'm supposed to respond when I, you know, have something to say during public comment or if I'm not supposed to.
Sure, we can open that up for discussion.
Maybe at the start of the next meeting, if you could state, Tim, explicitly what...
Let me give it some thought.
Yeah, thank you.
Obviously, the reason for it is that I like to respond to questions that are easily answered in a, you know, at a meeting.
But I don't think that's for us to decide what's easily answered in the moment. I think that, out of respect, something that may seem easily answered to one board member, not to the other, you know, it's just, we can't make that sort of...
I understand what you're saying.
Okay, and then the second thing is totally off-topic, but with the announcement that SVHC has gone, you know, made an offer on the SVC property, I want to explore what, how meaningful that possibly could be to our school, to MAU. Maybe there's some way for that facility to be used for alternative ed programming. I know that when Dr. Nixon gave that report to his committee, gosh, 18 months ago or whatever, you know, one of the main things that worked well about alternative ed programs was when they are located off-campus. So I just want to put the bug in everyone's ears that maybe we should, you know, start thinking creatively about if there is that sort of partnership developing between the town and other community members that we can be part of that as well. So I just, I think it's incumbent upon us to kind of get in the leadership game about how that property might be used, if that does come to pass.
Sure, good, we will do that. Anybody else have any comments they'd like to make? If not, we can...
I do.
Yeah.
Can I say something?
We've passed public comments, we're done. So the time for public comments was at the time for public comments. And we'll make that clear, as Amy has suggested at the beginning of next meeting, exactly how to interpret public comments in terms of the board's response. Okay?
I don't have a public comment, I have a question.
Well, we've passed that part of the agenda now. The agenda really is set up so that we have a guideline that we can follow so that things progress in an orderly way. So we're more than happy to answer your question at the next meeting. If you have a question for a principal, as they've suggested, give them a call. If there are more problems, give the central office a call. But the board has ended its public comment session. Okay. Let's see, I want to be sure that I've covered everything here. Are there any other issues that wish to be brought before this board? If not, accept a motion to adjourn?
Agreed.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstentions? Jim, could you just hang on for just a minute, I want to clarify a couple of points with you? Thank you all very much.